Yes.
Okay, welcome to our December 5th meeting, special meeting. This meeting is to discuss insurance options and try to get underway with that. So our employees can have insurance at the beginning of the year and they're not behind. And since this is a special meeting, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna stand for the flag or anything. Just gonna go ahead and get it over with. We're meeting with Shepherd Insurance, Jason Bukowski and Austin Akers. Welcome guys, thank you for coming.
You want us to join up there?
Yep, come on up here and let's uh.
Well, look, we've, we recognize it's 4:30 on a Friday. So, thank you for interrupting your Friday evening for us. And again, hopefully we won't be too long, but very positive news to share. Austin's gonna share that before we turn over to benefits. Had a very positive week on the property casualty side as well. On Monday, had a carrier here that spent four or five hours with us visiting different departments. I sent y'all an email, but again, publicly, just wanna state how well your people showed. That they, they are impressive. We were at the jail, very impressed with the jail facilities, the organization, the cleanliness of the jail that the inspectors from the agents, or from the carrier commented is one of the best facilities that they've visited this year. So, good, kudos to them. We spent some time here in the HR department with Jennifer. We moved to the health department with Susan. And then we were with Kevin in the highway department. And every stop and every visit was very positive. I, I think that day, that was a big day, but I think it's going to, again, reward us in a couple of weeks. That it's under, underwriting review, whether or not that carrier chooses to participate is still undecided. We should hear something probably Tuesday or Wednesday next week. But in all of our side conversations and all of our, our communication with them, nothing but positive things. So, very optimistic on the property casualty side. And again, as soon as those, that ball starts rolling, we have another visit, another inspection coming early next week with yet another carrier. So, all, all good stuff on the property casualty side. But this meeting's about benefits, Austin.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. First and foremost, I wanted to thank you and your team for all they've done for us on the benefit side. I know it's been a huge ask, but you guys have been outstanding to work with. And I, I know, again, it's been taxing, but we look forward to the challenge. And I know we have, you know, a lot to get done in the next three or four weeks, but anything we can do on our end, feel free to reach out.
Well, anytime we've asked, we've gotten a good, positive response. So, we're thankful for that too. So.
Again, I know, you know, we have asked a lot and I know you're probably tired of seeing us. So, we, like, we, again, we appreciate it. So, I just wanted to dive in. I know I've shared a lot of this information with you guys. What's in here is a little bit different than what we shared though, because Cigna has revised their renewal once again, because we, as I shared in the email, reduced our, what will be the commission by 50%. So, what that did to the rates was it decreased it quite a bit. So, now the difference is $43,868 between Cigna and Anthem, which would be the lowest. And Anthem, as you remember, is flat from what your current rates are. So, now the only difference between the two is that $43,000. So, I did wanna highlight that and that's, you know, again, everything else is the exact same in the email, but I just wanted to highlight that one point. And in this, again, apples to apples across the board on all the plan designs, nothing would be changing. So, again, there are some enhancements on the ancillary side. Like, for instance, with the standard on the basic life, there would be a guaranteed issue increase. Right now, you currently have $100,000, it would bump up to $150,000. And you're also getting a 30% reduction in the cost. So, I know, a richer benefit for a decreased cost win-win. And again, that is something that the county is paying for. So, anywhere we can cut costs, we're trying to do that. And again, it's an increased benefit. So, again, another highlight, as we covered, any carrier that you go with, they do want the dental and vision to be tied to that. And that's the same way it is today with Cigna. That's the ask of Anthem, that's the ask of United Healthcare. Are there any questions? And another thing that I did wanna highlight is if you do decide to make a carrier change, and I just wanna highlight from my experience with Cigna and with, you know, Anthem and United Healthcare, I've had great experience with all three. We're independent, we work with all of them. If you were to make a transition, there would be no gap in coverage. So, what that means is if there was a claim in between that time, between, you know, December 31st and January 1st, it would be covered. So, there's, there are no issues there, just to be clear with that. So, all employees would have coverage no matter what.
Okay. Sure anything?
And their spouses, right?
Correct, 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 correct. Yes, across the board.
And, and again, the, the reason for the meeting at 4:30 on a Friday is, you know, the work that comes after tonight. Employee education, again, you can have the most rich benefit with good news and good premiums, but if it's not delivered to the employees in a positive way, it, it's not necessarily recognized. So, excited for you all to get to see how our team delivers and supports employees that do participate to the plan. Employee ID cards, you know, we want them to have cards in hand when that clock turns 2026, just in case on January the 1st, somebody needs to utilize their benefit, they've got a card in hand. And so, again, thanks for the, for the late notice to get this done. And, you know, with 25 days left in the month, we think we can deliver and communicate and educate all the employees, get them enrolled and get, get cards in hand.
And another thing, we've had, you know, two weeks to really work on this, which, you know, we're excited about what came back from the market, but we're really excited about the outreach we've received from a lot of the members. They're really engaged, they wanna, you know, make it some changes. So, you know, we look forward to huddling, you know, with different committees, the insurance committee with different members, and really making some changes and, you know, being a lot more proactive instead of reactive, like it feels like it has been in the past. So, those are things that we wanna get started right away. I know we didn't have time at this renewal, just given the timing, but that's something that, you know, we want to involve as many people that wanna be involved in this process.
Well, I wanna say, you know, I appreciate you guys, cuz this is, to be honest, it's, it's already started off a whole lot more positive than it has in the past. So, I appreciate you guys coming, coming on so strong right after. You've had a really short notice in trying to pull this up and it's, I know you had to jump through a lot of hoops, so I appreciate it.
That's where I like to turn to Jennifer and her team, because we couldn't do it without them. And, you know, and we came in, I think, two days after and they opened up their books and they said, what do you need? We're here, and they were on it immediately. So, again, we couldn't have done it without them.
Yeah, Jennifer does a really good job. I appreciate you. So, what did Cigna initially come back with? I know they.
Their initial renewal was, was about 21% increase. And then they revised the renewal, which was down about 5%. And then when we reduced our commission, that would have been in there, that was currently in place from the prior broker, it reduced it down to about 1.9% total increase. So, that's what it is. And that dollar amount is $43,868 difference between current and the renewal. And so Anthem being flat, that's the difference between them and Anthem. So, there is a $43,000 savings moving to Anthem.
Yeah, okay. Well, and then Anthem's offering the same exact thing as what Cigna did as far as coverage?
Correct, every carrier's apples to apples.
So. Same premium we have this year?
Correct.
Well, I mean, speaking for me, we've had Anthem for two years. And, and two.
Cigna.
Cigna, did I say Anthem? No, I'm sorry. Cigna, we had Cigna for two years. And in the last couple of years, we've had them at the end of the year when everybody has met their deductibles. We've had, uh, health providers drop us for a short time period, which really interrupted everybody's, you know, one. Normally, people try to hold off the end of the year, once they've met their deductibles, to try to get a lot of their, their healthcare problems taken care of. So, it's really hurt our county employees. And our county employees, you know, their benefits is greatly important to them. It's really important to them, because we're not giving them a whole lot of raises here.
Some of them are not getting in.
They're right, right, they're not getting any raises. So, I think it's, for me, the responsible thing to do is to make sure that they have good insurance and good coverage, that will not get interrupted. So, I'm gonna move to, go to Anthem.
Which is all the more important with that, was those potential increases that we were looking at. So, I appreciate, you know, all of our carriers here sharpening their pencils and, and understanding and giving us an opportunity to also work with them as well here. So, I think, you know, Cigna, I think, does a good job. I'm very familiar, probably with Anthem, I've had Anthem for many years in state government. So, but I think overall, Cigna's been pretty good. Problem that I've kinda had with Cigna has always been the disruption coverage. And that's a real concern. I mean, it was just, you know, two years ago, we had some issues at Fuller Memorial. Yeah, where we had to work through some of that. And of course, a lot of our folks down here, you know, they use that hospital.
Sure.
And those services down there. When we look at just a few months ago, we had some issues with Norton Healthcare. And that's a real big problem there, because now we're hitting right here at home. And the other part of that, which, you know, kinda put a real negative light on that for me, is folks have worked all year and then you get up to the end where you've met your deductible. And I, I've personally done this, where, hey, I've met my deductible, now could be the right time. I might have to have surgery, like I did a couple of years last year on my shoulder. So, you know, folks, you know, are in those situations that's met deductibles and trying to get things scheduled for surgeries or what have you, or even emergencies that pop up. And now, all of a sudden, we've got some issues here at home. And I'm, to me, that's risky. I don't like, don't like that, I don't like that for them. And, and I wanna move away from that. And I, I, I agree with Randy. I think I would, I'm probably more of the stance to, to move towards Anthem as well.
No, for me, I, federal government, I use Anthem. Right now, I utilize the VA. So, I'm looking over this, apples to apples, you know, just being a good steward of taxpayer money. It's the cheapest, but also the best benefit. And so, wanna make sure we aren't a taxpayer's taxpayer money and go forward. I hate that it's not lower, we can save more money, but also I know, you know, y'all did what you could. And that, you know, they put forward their best bids. And so, that's what we got to work with.
There's some different funding structures we'd like to look at, you know, next year, that could lead to additional cost savings. It would have been a huge task on, on Jennifer and her team to take that on. It would have been a big adjustment for the members in such, such a short amount of time. And so, getting apples to apples and given the loss ratio that we're looking at this year, getting them to a flat renewal, it was asking a lot. And again, we believe that, you know, claims are trending in the right direction. So, looking at those different funding structures, I think is a great idea going forward. And again, putting in some of those, or the levers that are gonna be more proactive will lead to, you know, better results.
Having more time.
Exactly.
Not a bad thing. And this is my fifth year as commissioner. I can tell you that every year's, we have went up in cost, insurance costs. And this, this is the first year we've not done that.
Yeah.
So, it's, that's a big question.
And, you know, from a county standpoint, you know, we need to do our part too and try and stay healthy. You know, so we need to take some of this on as well and, and try to make a point for 26 to be healthy. And, you know, get started a little bit earlier next time. Look for additional savings that are out there.
Well, our, our focus has been on, obviously, trying to get the best results that we can in a very short window of time. Right? We, we know that we all have an insurance committee already established at Shepherd. We haven't really talked about it, but we, we can now, you know. At Shepherd, we have our own wellness coordinator, her name is Brittany Nelson. She's there as a support person to all of our groups to talk about the exact same thing, very that you talked about. Would like to introduce you to, to Brittany. We have mentioned briefly about some other local community partners that have resources that could support our employees and could that potentially bring cost savings throughout the course of the year. We're gonna talk about those things as, as well. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. And again, we don't wanna drop any names, but we had a hospital, you know, that reached out to us that wants to work and, you know, figure out a way and that's gonna reduce claims. So, again, there's proactive things we're trying to, but in such a short window, it's really hard to do that without causing a lot of disruption. And, and making a carrier switch is gonna cause some disruption, I'm not gonna lie. But we're gonna work hard to make sure we minimize that and get in front of it as well as we can in those employee meetings. Like, there's gonna be pharmacy changes, we're gonna make them aware of that. And again, they need to fill them before the first, because again, there could be some slight disruption. There's gonna be new ID cards, make sure that, hey, you're getting everything, you know, processed as soon as you can. And then again, we're gonna have those ID cards as soon as we can, but we have to get the enrollments done. And so, that's why we called this meeting as soon as possible, cuz we're gonna try to get them active next week and get them done, get everything processed as soon as we can. But again, it's, it's a big lift, so we're not that asking you for help, is what I meant.
It's just saying it's saying it, so it's on recording. Baptist Health, Norton, you know, all that's covered, right? Everyone, hear what they use now, you'll see what everyone uses. So, everything's still in network?
Yeah.
Everything's covered, right?
Yep.
And I think with, with Anthem being, again, recognized as one of the largest, if not the, the largest network in the country, that, um, those, that network access is gonna broaden, not, not shrink.
Oh, yeah. Just wanna make sure people knew, they could keep the doctors and everything.
Yep, well done.
I think we, if I'm quoting this right, you correct me if I'm wrong. Cigna spent 110% over what we, well, they went 10% over what we paid in for insurance this year.
Well, your claims ran over that.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's where their renewal offer was pretty favorable.
It was.
Yeah.
Honestly, it.
Yeah.
The fact that Anthem is, is.
It's good, exactly.
Amazing.
And that's what I was getting at, to get a flat renewal. Yeah, correct. The 21% increase that Cigna started with on a claims where yours have run is probably where your renewal should have been. So, getting it to a flat renewal, given the claims history, just on a fully insured case or a level funded case, it's a pretty favorable renewal at where we ended up. And again, different funding structures, there's protections we can put in place to minimize the cost and, you know, to get a better renewal result, but for fully insured or level funded, to get where we got, I think so win.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, cuz what we had in place was, before we started this process, was a 3%, or was it more than that, increase from that no compete, I had clause that they think they were waving? Maybe it was five.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I just thought we can do better than that.
Yeah, and it started at 21 and then they offered the five, the no shop on 5%.
And this was before you guys came in.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just had a citizen and employee text us. Is our county EMS in network?
We'll double check with Anthem, just to confirm that.
Okay.
It should be in network though. Cuz I know it was for Cigna.
Which the reason I'm bringing that up is I think that, and I spoke with Austin about this too.
But I believe the way Cigna built it, it was still in network, but it just didn't show up in network originally. But I'll double check on that.
Okay.
I think that we're definitely gonna have to, I think we really need to look hard at hiring an in-house nurse practitioner or a doctor, any home nurse practitioner would probably be the best way to go, it's cheaper. To start offsetting some of these visits, to start getting our, a decline in the costs. Thank you. Like the first one, I think, Cigna come back, was it like $488,000 increase?
Uh, yeah, that would have been at 21%.
Yeah. So, when you start looking at increases like that, I think we could definitely.
The city of Jeff has their own.
Offset that.
Clinic.
Yeah. We, we could more than pay for some, you know, our employees to have a, a free health clinic. So.
Yeah, that'd be something if you guys could get some information off of us.
Absolutely. We have several clients that have health clinics and that's what the provider that we were talking about, that's getting one of those in place.
Yeah.
Alright, so we need to make an official motion to accept that?
Oh, yes.
I'll make a motion to accept Anthem as our.
I'll say, and I'll make that unanimous, you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then, you said by Wednesday, no valid property, is that a good possibility?
Well, I hope so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, so I guess we'll see you on the jet.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Then, make a motion to adjourn? We can only talk about the insurance. We can only talk about insurance, I think.
Well, that's, Zach said we could sign.
It's a special, we didn't say what it was for, it's not exactly.
What are we gonna sign? I think they'll.
Thank you, guys.
Could you guys hold on one second? Sure. Do you have, well, if you, I need to go to my office, but I wanna talk to you about a forward claim.
Okay.
Stand by, Zach.
Are we still ready? So, Zach wanted us to, if we are so inclined, to sign the paperwork for the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
While we're here. And he said we could do that during this meeting.
Those signatures there?
Yeah, I talked to, well, Baker Tilly while I was up in commissary training this week. And they've definitely got some pretty good deals and they were really happy with them.
So, Jennifer, I'm gonna ask the hard question.
What's that?
How much money do we have left over this year?
We are.
Projected.
Just to have a peek at the step away, we're under $700,000 in the general fund at, at this point. I think we'll have maybe another, we'll have a few more additionals coming at the end of the year. Oh my gosh, I'm thinking off the top of my head, we were around $40,000 in the lit, public safety, and three something in the lit, special purpose.
Three?
300 and something.
300 and something.
But you have to think, we're gonna have $215,000, $216,000 payment January 5th. We will have to have that to cover that. So, I mean.
To cover this?
No.
To cover the.
The bond at the jail.
Did you?
Do we have a number of other invoices?
Other invoices that have come in?
Yeah.
What's coming in, we're paying as we go. So, to say what each department's gonna bring back, I have no idea. I have no idea on that.
Alright, and the total ask was four, what?
488 something.
Huh?
488.
So, some of this, isn't that easy?
Those were just the signature sheets.
Oh, uh, 4.8 million? And the county's on the hook for that for the next 20 years.
And that'll be addressed Tuesday night in the council meeting. We'll have to approve the amortization sheets and things like that there.
Okay. For me, I'm not gonna sign this. But you two can make up your own line, what you wanna do, of course.
Do they, there's only one more council meeting, right?
Unless they plan a special one, which I think we're gonna need to do that.
So, with the council meeting, what is, what are they doing with the bond?
They'll have to approve it and they'll have approval of like the amorti- amortization sheets and things like that.
And then where the money's going and all that.
See, that's something we haven't seen.
Yeah. So, if we wanna put this on Wednesday, that way we know what's going on.
I think they said, here's what Frost Brown Todd, Matt Duncan told me. He needs this back by Monday morning to be able to finish up the paperwork for Tuesday night's meeting, is what I understand. You may wanna talk to Zach about that to make sure, but that's the way I understand it.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, since we're on the video right now, cuz I want people to understand that's watching this, this video. I have asked several times out of our council. And these people that we're using for this bond service, we pay them to give us information. So, what I asked is not an unreasonable question, but I wanted a, a pyramid, uh, graph, sent out to state, how much money we got coming in, where it's been broke down and filtered out throughout the county, and how much we had at the end of the year. I, the council refused to give me that. I'm not in here trying to bash the council right now, but without giving me 100% information, I am not gonna put the county on the hook for 4.8 million dollars. I wouldn't take that, 4.8 million dollars is beyond what I'm gonna take somebody's word for. So, I wouldn't do that in my personal business and I'm sure I'm gonna do it to the county. I, that's just, that's how I feel.
Is this the Jokel bond?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. This is the bond that says, you know, we are going to replace what we gave Jerry for his, his, uh.
Budget. His budget.
His budget, thank you, Chris. And the problem, I, I, you know, again, I'm not trying to burden anybody here, I'm just stating facts. We have a lot of lawsuit payments that we have to pay for now because of this argument, right? And on top of that, you know, that's gonna come out of the, the general fund. I don't think that's the people's, got county's responsibility to pay for. And, uh, the overall end of this was Jerry, they, they said that they, well, they come out with 1.4 is what they was gonna give him and then they was gonna give him appropriations as needed. And they said that it was gonna end up at the end to be 4.?
3.3, 4.3?
Yeah. I'm sorry, guys, we had a lot of numbers to go through around, but, and then they turned around.
Centipede Way was actually 1.7, but that did include the T-bond payments for the jail. So, that skewed that a little bit with what would be appropriated later on, so.
But they ended up giving him, they said they was gonna give him 4.4, right?
Pretty close to that.
4.4. And we ended up giving him 4.8, right? When is $300,000?
It was a little less than that, it was less than that that we gave him.
After the, so, we spent more money in legal fees than what we was gonna give Jerry or should have gave, or could have gave Jerry. So.
One of the things I would say now though, is I think with the work that's already been done, we're gonna be on the hook for paying our financial advisors.
Yeah, we're gonna, now we're gonna have to pay these guys for drawing all this up. And I, and I get that. But again.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I, I understand the need. Yeah, I think it's, uh, again, I, I understand the need, the need for it. But the second part of that is, is that nobody has sat down to show us how that's, like Randy's saying, how it's gonna be structured now, where it's gonna go. And that's my, that's always been my concern with this.
I mean, here we're talking about the, and again.
And not to be, I need to say that just today, the treasurer and myself were in a quandary because we thought at first that this money can go into our sweep account. And then we've been told by banker that it can't be, and now we're being told, and so we said, okay, we don't have to contact the state board of council. They said, no, you can use the sweep account, but now they're going back saying that we can't, so we're not getting a lot of information on this either.
No, we're not, and.
It just feels like it's kinda getting shut down a throat here.
It does.
Pass this, and I, I just don't have it, I mean, I just don't have enough information here to sign it.
And, and let's face it, I mean, the, the council says we need to repaint and everything else and they don't have the scope of work over there, because I mean, but they want to be involved in knowing how we're going to fix up the, uh, the renovations over here in, in the courthouse and in, uh, county hall building. County hall building might not be the name, I'm just using that to, uh, keep everybody knowing what building we're talking about, but, uh, here they want, they want to know everything going on so they can decide whether or not they want to or don't want to spend money on certain areas, which is not the county's job, but yet at the same point in time, we're asking them where this money's gonna go and they won't tell us anything about it. So, you know, not the play devil's advocate here, but, uh, if it, if it requires my signature to get it done.
The taxpayers need to deserve.
They deserve to know what's going on.
I mean, that's just, that's kind of bottom line, I mean.
Exactly.
If somebody asked me, I couldn't tell. All I can say is it's gonna shore up, you know, some budgets. And give us a cushion to operate on for the next so many years.
Yeah, and the point I was trying to make, they're trying to play, they're trying to play a double edged sword.
But the thing about that is, is, and that's, I'm not questioning, I, look, I mean, the county has shortfalls, so I'm not gonna, I'm not questioning that from, from the bond standpoint. I solely am just concerned because I wanna see a structure how this is gonna be used. And that's what we can go back to. I mean, it's just like, it's a, it's, it's a scope of work that we can always go back and look and say, hey, you know, this is, this is what you said that was intended for. And then we got away from it, that's always been my concern. And, um, that's, that's what I'm asking for is just to, to give us an idea on where this money's gonna be used.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Has Heather or the council's attorney read that or has anything, like with your meetings with the council outlined where the money's going or any?
Not that I've seen.
Okay. And, because we've had to approve the bond initially for them to move forward. Well, I, I think that was the meeting where I got stuck on a plane, I wasn't able to join that meeting. And, um.
I think we all voted for the bond.
Yeah, and I came out, made a post, you know, saying that if the council, it's a financial body, they say we need it. But, you know.
It, it, and I mean, here's another scenario. I understand that, that we might be in some tight situations. I realize that, um.
Our funds will be very close compared to last year going into twenty twenty-six.
Right.
There's no doubt about that.
But if we, if we get in trouble, it's not like we can't get a line of credit to get ourselves taken care of.
Possibly, but what would our interest rate be?
I, I've talked to, I, I talked to, uh, two different banks, one bank being here in Scottsburg, and they said it would be the same interest rate.
Okay.
So when it's the same interest rate.
It's not twenty years, yeah.
Yeah. And that way we're only borrowing the money we actually need, instead of putting four million, four and a half million dollars out here for everybody to think, oh, we've got four and a half million dollars, we're okay.
And I think, to be fair, probably with the bond, um, just playing devil's advocate here, you know, with, with the bond, it's, the increases are gonna be very minimal to the taxpayer, I mean, that's, but it's still an increase and, um, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of challenges, uh, throughout government right now with, uh, Senate bill one. And, uh, and most, most of those challenges come from the reduction of property taxes. So, you know, on, on one way, you know, we're, we're, you know, the state is saying, okay, property owner, we're reducing your, you know, property taxes, this amount of money. But then the county comes in the back door and says, well, we're gonna, we're gonna increase it a little bit too, so there's not gonna be a real savings on their end. But again, the bond, um, will be minimal, there, it'll be minimal, uh, on the taxpayers. But I, my, my concern all along has been, how's this gonna be structured? I mean, where does it go? You know, who's, who's gonna benefit? If this money is going to just, you know, set somewhere and only be used for emergency purposes, you know, for those situations that arise, um, that's one thing. But if it's just to, hey, we've got a bunch of money and we just start kicking it around in these different places and we say, you know, this is twenty years and, you know, in six years, you know, we've, we've blown it. Uh, I just, I, I have real concerns about where this money ultimately ends up going and, um.
Well, and, look, we, we heard the JR say that he wants to give bonuses and he wants to give raises. With, you know, since we got this money, alright. And I, every one of our employees deserve a bonus, every one of our employees deserve a raise.
Absolutely, you just, just heard from, you guys together, talk about, you know, how impressed he was with our departments.
I mean, yeah, we had really good people.
We can't borrow money.
But exactly. You cannot.
That's just, that's irresponsible.
That is a non-way of doing business. So. So.
I, I mean, I, I, I just, I would like to see more with this before I send my name to them.
From my understanding with this paperwork, we have to sign it in order for them to get everything together, to understand where they're gonna put everything, to finalize that all, or to get it in order, is that what I'm understanding? From, from your, what you're thinking, what, what you know?
I think at the end, it's to give it back to Frost Brown Todd for them to finalize the paperwork to present to the council for Tuesday night. They need it by Monday morning at the latest, is what I was understanding.
My question is. Once we sign this, though.
I think you're.
Approved.
Yeah, it's approved, I mean.
As long as the council provides it, that's what I understand.
And my problem, like you, my problem is, I, they knew that they needed my signature, signature, they knew they needed your signature, they knew they needed Adam's signature. I've asked repeatedly for this pyramid, that's not a very big ask when you're, when you're asking somebody to sign for four point eight million dollars. To me, that's, it's sketchy at best. It's, I'm sorry. I'll shut up now, because I know that I, but it, I can't do it to the people of Scott County. Well, that's not why.
I think we're, you know, I mean, we're in a situation where we, we may have to do it, I mean, we.
I may have understood.
Right, but that's the thing, I, I wanna see, I just wanna see more too.
I do too, I wanna see, uh, have we done absolutely a hundred percent of the things we could do to not take this? Because I ain't even bring that yet either.
Zach, uh, gotta call from Heather. We approved it, it falls on the council, council does everything with money. We approved them to get the bond. And we signed the paperwork for them to get the bond and control the financials. And so, from the way I'm understanding it, they are the financial body, we don't dabble in financials. We sign the paperwork, they go forward and do what they do.
Okay. I'm not.
That's how, that's how it works.
Yeah, well, so we stay in our, like, we, we sign the contract.
Hey, I understand by staying in your lane, council's done a real good job by staying in their lane.
So.
And if it requires my signature, then I'm not sure I'm buying that, and my answer is still, I'm not signing.
Because I have our attorney calling.
Yeah, Zach's calling regularly.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was trying to be the best way, yeah.
I mean, if it's just a pass through, then why does it require our signature?
Because we are the time recorder.
Right?
So, but they are the financial body, they are responsible for the monies.
Well, I, I, I get that.
Yeah.
But at the same point in time, Adam.
We also, uh.
We are, we are the deciding factor on how things get ran and all the time they, and I'm gonna give you a prior thing, okay? The other day, uh, uh, JR, Emmy sat there and said, uh, the paint, painting was fourteen thousand dollars, he, he's alright with us paying to do that, but he thinks that's too high for the paint job. He don't even have a works permit. He has no idea what, uh, Hicks was even bidding on. So how can you sit there and say that it was too high of a bid? You see what I'm, and that's the thing, we've been playing with them all along for the last five years. So, hey, and I'm not saying no because I wanna get even with them.
No.
I'm saying no because they have not provided me the information that I asked for, and if it requires my name.
No, I, yeah, I got you. No, I'm trying.
I'm not trying to start a war, it's just, this is four point eight million dollars, this is twenty years.
I understand that too, I understand that too. My understanding, this whole thing was a judgment bond from the beginning, when this whole thing went down with the, before my time, the month before my time.
Alright.
You're about to get it wrong. You know, this was always gonna be the end factor for the out, and, you know, the outcome of what's gonna happen. And so this is all I've heard for the past year, that we were gonna end up with this. And so.
I'm getting ready to call.
Sure.
Alright, cool. It's up to you guys what you're gonna do. I'm only one vote, you guys can pass it without me, that's fine.
We may not, we may not have a choice and, um.
I wasn't gonna say that. Well, you know, you always have a choice in whether or not you put your name on this paper. There is not a law in this land that is gonna say you have to sign something.
That's true, but.
I understand that.
Much like everything else, uh, because there's been a lot of work done already, that could, that could lead to.
Another lawsuit?
Yeah.
You know? And I, I, I get that, but I'll tell you what, and my feelings on that, we wouldn't, with the numbers you just gave us, if we didn't have to pay all the lawyers and all this other stuff that we just went through, we wouldn't have to look at this right now.
It definitely cost us some money.
It's a council's fault for proceeding, that's the way I feel. Again, guys, I'm, you can vote the way you want to, I'm not trying to sell nobody on anything, I just want everybody to understand if it requires my signature only, everybody's gonna be screwed because I'm not putting my signature on. But if you guys feel like you have to sign it, that is something you, you guys have to decide. I'm not, I'm not gonna sign, I asked, I asked for information, excuse me, they're gonna give me information. I can't look at people and explain to them a hundred percent with conviction on why we need this. Because it hasn't been proven to me, even after asking. And if I can't do that to people, I'm not gonna sign this paper.
Yeah, and I, I certainly understand where you're at there. The information early on that was given to us, that's how, we voted on the shortfalls that were presented to us in a previous meeting and, um.
And I did that on good faith, thinking they was gonna give me the information I was asking. I never was given that. So I'm, I'm sorry that it's come down to any.
Yeah, we, the other, the other tricky part of that is too, we're following the direction of our attorneys. And so it's, this has been reviewed, uh, by, by a number of folks, but, uh, from a legal standpoint, we're, and financial standpoint, they are, they've laid out the direction for us to, where to move to, so, um, I'm not, by no means second guessing them or their guidance by no means, but I, I do agree with Randy that there's never, never been.
There's not, there's not enough communication in this whole process.
And I, I find that to be a big problem.
And, and I feel that way, and I know Ryan has kinda got pulled into that in the last week as well, so.
The unfortunate part about this, with board of commissioners, is that we have found ourselves in the middle of, uh.
Welcome to my world. Welcome to my world.
Of another battle. And that, that's unfortunate. Because of some of the things that, that Heather was pointing out, and she is right, we are not the fiscal, uh, board for this county. But it's unfortunate that we have found ourselves in the middle of this issue.
Well, let's bring it to a pop.
What was your information?
I'm not sure how to word this. Yeah, we, we could be sued, uh, pretty drastically if we don't move forward with this. We, there was an ordinance, our attorney believes that would be, this would go into a bond fund that would be used to supplement or pay back the sheriff's fund to where. And then there is a bond council that I think we have that could also possibly come after it.
I, I don't think we can be sued, we might owe, we might owe a fee. And if we refuse to pay that fee, we could be sued, and I'm not gonna refute them being paid for the work victim.
So that was Zach's word, that was our attorney.
That's what he, that's what he told me.
Hold on, I'll switch on speaker.
I don't like silence.
Okay, Zach's on the phone, he'd like to be on speaker, can you go, he's on speaker phone, can you hear us?
I, I can't.
You cannot?
I, I can.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Zach.
Alright, um, I don't know where, I mean, obviously I cannot be physically there at the meeting tonight, I'm sorry. So let me back up here. So let me back up here, and I don't know what's going on, but I want to be clear that my understanding of the purpose for this meeting was to discuss insurance.
Yes, for a special session.
Okay. When you specifically notice a meeting for the county commissioners or a special meeting for a specific purpose, you can only address those issues that are.
Well, I think it just said special session. I don't think that we put what it was for.
Okay. My understanding is that there's been some discussion about signatures related to the bond.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, just to be clear with everyone, the ordinance approving the bond that was passed by council passed, it, it came to the commissioners to approve the form of the bond that passed.
Correct.
Both the, and the form of the bond motion actually included authorizations for individual board members to sign the final closing documents outside of the meeting. The preparation of the bond paperwork, the, uh, legal and financial expertise that was required to prepare these documents required that the county, uh, obtain, uh, financial advice from Baker Tilly, uh, and received legal advice from Frost Brown Todd for, uh, the bond itself, uh, and the form of the bond. And, you know, we have had an underwriter review of everything, and we are now four days away from closing and have incurred a substantial amount of costs that are actually built into the bond itself. So the county has expended enormous resources in securing the bond itself, and we will be obligated on those, those amounts whether you decide to proceed with the bond or not. So if you choose not to proceed with the bond, I think you're going to have to understand that you are likely going to be subject to, uh, amounts for services already incurred as it relates to the preparation of the bond, of research related to the bond, both financial and legal, and for any other services that then were formed, because those were built into the bond. Um, you know, so I don't know what those specific amounts are. Uh, but, but be aware that you was likely be sued relative to those deficiencies if it's, if the payments are not to come out of your bond.
Zach, is there stipulations on how that bond money can be spent?
The bond goes into the, uh, uh, or the fund that was created by the ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, and it is essentially expended the same way as any other fund is, but it is, um, theoretically more, more limited to the purposes described in that judgment uh, from which the bond, you know, was issued or for which the bond was issued. Uh, so again, this would be sheriff's department expenses, um, you know, the initial amounts that came out of the general fund, uh, to, uh, pay for salary increases and other things. Uh, but it's supposed to shore up, you know, those losses essentially from other funds. Uh, you know, is there a specific plan that has been adopted for the use of every single dollar? I, I don't believe that is the case, but I don't believe that there would be that in any form of bond, whether that be, uh, you know, a general obligation bond, a go-bond, or, you know, uh, a capital improvement project, you know? I don't believe that every single dollar would be allotted in accountants' work in a, in the same way that a budget is. Uh, so just be aware, uh, you know, and there should be some documentation in some of the paperwork about the amounts of the fees, uh, that I believe that would be in, uh, close to the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I, I understand. Hundreds of thousands of dollars is easier to pay, it should be paid back quicker than 20 years.
Well, not if you don't have any money.
That's right, and, and.
Well, I get that. I get that.
Some of the, and I'm like Zach, that I have not seen all the numbers, but if the one number that I've seen is correct and the others anywhere, it would more than drain our general funds of the year. So then if we had to pay that, we probably would not have enough money to get through the year. If we had to pay what's supposed to come out of the bond. I think we could be in trouble there.
Well, I'm also, thank you again to the council.
I mean, again, this is not an issue that has not already been passed and voted on by this board.
I understand that, Zach, but I also asked and was told in good faith that I was going to get a graph that was never sent to me. And they, the, the council has not at one time explained to us where this money was going to go, or how it was going to be saved, how it was going to be spent. Uh, and I realize that, I realize that is, that is there, under the, underneath their, uh, their wheelhouse. But at the same point in time, there's several things that's under our wheelhouse that they make sure that they hold that.
Just be very clear about the amounts.
Yeah.
The total amount and the aggregate principal on the bond based on information received as of December 9th of 2025 is $4,805,555. That is more than $400,000 in excess of the judgment that was entered, and I have to believe that in some respects, that is, that $400,000 difference is the, is the calculated piece of cost associated with the issuance of the bond. So just be aware, uh, that, that is, you know, what you are risking in terms of liability for the county of, of amounts that I don't know where you would, you would pay that sum. I don't, I don't know that you have that much.
Why, why could we not get a line of credit? Why did we have to get $4.8 million?
Credit our group, uh, as county council, not the county shares.
Right. I get that, but how come that's not being looked at instead of the $4.8 million bond?
Well, I mean. Right, the, 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 the 4.4 hundred comes from a judgment that was entered against the county that everyone agreed to and signed off on.
I, I understand.
Yeah, it's like I was saying earlier, Zach, I mean, the board of commissioners are just in an unfair position, uh, that we're between, you know, the council and, and that judgment from the sheriff's department, um, and that whole deal. Um, unfortunately, we're, we're in the middle of that. And I, I guess the other concern that I had, that I said a little bit earlier, if there's something else that comes out and drops out of the sky on us, then we're, we're in real trouble. If there's, if there's an emergency or Lord knows, there's another judgment that gets thrown out against the council for something different, I don't know. I'm just saying, if there's, if we run into other things, then even the line of credit that we're chasing now to share that funds, we're still going to be behind. I, I think at least, maybe in this sense, at, at least we know if, if the funding is there and we, we have emergencies or there's more problems, um, it can be addressed.
Well, I, I, I understand those concerns, um, you know, um. I think that Baker Tilly has done a fairly thorough analysis because they have to, as part of the preparation. And from my multiple meetings and discussions with them, uh, you know, and, um, other representatives of the county, I don't know that there was any historically sound way that they believed that the county could continue to operate without this type of bond, without talking about even more substantially significant cuts than I think the council was having to address during their normal budget session.
Yeah.
Um, I, I realize that everyone has been put in a hard place here. Uh, but the judgment was entered into, uh, the bond ordinance was approved, and you guys have already voted to authorize the signing of the documents necessary to execute the closing of the bond. So we have continued to operate, you know, everyone else has continued to operate because this, this was going forward, and we have continued to approve fees, uh, and other things while this has been pending. My point is that, you know, and I, I'm going to be honest with you, I don't think the line of credit is at all an available remedy for, uh, amounts for these types of services unless the, unless the county council were going over it to do that. Uh, and even then, I don't know. I, I would have to, you know, consult with their attorney and consult with, again, Baker Tilly.
Okay.
I believe that the county council does have to negotiate with states related to any funds that they do, like, for budgeting, for anything that they were going to use any of these funds for. Okay, and that plan has to be explained, you know, essentially by another budget uh, in the next fiscal cycle. So just like any other fund, they have to go through that elaborations process and step. And, you know, maybe we don't have a final say as commissioners, which is certainly have a voice. And, you know, I won't necessarily be there at that time, you have the ability uh, to go in and make your thoughts and opinions known about what you believe was the most historically sound way to spend some of this money.
Yeah. Now, and that's a good point. Yeah, very good point.
No one is talking about sending this money for anything specific or right back.
Right. But I think, I think you just touched on something that's very important. I mean, I, you know, I think the community or taxpayers are going to be looking at us to help with that voice.
And taxpayers also have a voice and things.
That's right.
And participate.
Yep. Okay, thanks, Zach.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve the signatures of the bond, move it forward to the council.
I'll second that.
Okay. How do you feel? And for those listening at home. I, I want you to know that I think both commissioners here was, well, we're all was put in a, a bad situation here at this. Actually, I really did.
Yeah.
It was a hard decision and, uh, we all have our differences of, of opinion, and, uh, I believe that they're, they're doing what they think is the right thing to do. We've certainly heard from some outside sources that, you know, this is a good idea, but.
I think, let me double check, this is something else. That's the, that's what you're going to want.
And I'll take a motion to close the meeting unless you guys got something else, but.
No, we got a meeting on Wednesday.
Yes.
And that's here, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's got the parish.
Make a motion again.
I'll say. I don't, I don't like that either.